So we'll call the meeting to order and I believe we would do a roll call. Michelle, would you like to do a roll call, please?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for putting March on the agenda. I actually did amend the agenda and send it in. And so let me just do a quick roll call and I'll start with the RESJ. Alexandra Rosen.
Here.
Chair, I should address you as chair, and Veronica Garretts.
Yeah.
And I believe I will call the people's names who are not here, which is Liesel Blash, Sophia Martin, Serena Campbell, and Taiyu Nioki. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that name right. So we do not have a quorum, but you will not be making any decisions tonight, so that's okay. And now I will call the town council role. Councilmember Cutrano.
Present.
Who is also a member of the RESJ, Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee. And Mayor Ackerman.
Present.
Also, thank you, a member of the RESJ. Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
And Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Kohler.
I'm here.
All right, all the town council is present. Thank you. We have a quorum.
And I believe we should have a motion for an approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting for this joint meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Cutrano, second by Goddard, and I'll take the roll call. That would be, well, Michelle, I'll let you do it because I don't know whether we need to do a roll call of the RESJ members as well.
I think we can just do a roll call vote of the town council at this point, since there's not a quorum of the RESJ. But I'll do it. Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes. All right, and we could read the land acknowledgement if we all, we'd like to do that. I kind of think we have a lot to cover tonight, but let's read the land acknowledgement, and I will read that. "The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewaq people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging." Okay, so tonight, we don't have a formal agenda with action items on it, but it's a chance for us to talk. And so that's really what we can do tonight. And so one of the topics that I imagine we would want to talk about is just the budget. We both, Councilmember Cutrano and I, presented to the RESJ at the last meeting what the council, our understanding of what the council had indicated a preference for in the council budget discussion. And for, as I'm sure you know, the, tonight in the following meeting, which will be a regular council or a special council meeting, will have a public hearing on the budget as a whole. So that's the next step in the budget process for the town. But maybe I'll just ask first whether there's any desire for any clarification of what council members thought, or whether council members have any thoughts they'd like to express on the budget for the RESJ at this point. Chance.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge coming out of the town council's budget workshop that we did suggest to staff a $15,000 allocation per some of the requests that were made to the town council from RESJ, and that is reflected in item nine on tonight, on the agenda for the special town council meeting. And so there could be discussion about that at a later point. But I think that it felt to me as if the rationale for this joint meeting was to acknowledge and have dialogue about a larger request from the RESJ, which was specifically related to facilitation, and to hear the RESJ, hear from RESJ members specifically, so we could all have a dialogue about it and about the council's rationale, why we didn't bring that forward in the current budget as well. So I just, I think that was what I was understanding as part of the structure of what we were going to be chatting about and to answer questions related to that. But other council members could chime in, but I just wanted to put that out there is what my understanding of the, to ground why we're all here right now.
As far as the budget, I would add that there's other things we can talk about tonight, such as the Brown Act, some of the Brown Act specifications. Barbara?
Okay, so Liesel just texted me what meeting.
Oh.
So somebody should call her because I didn't want to be texting. But I think, and I think another reason, you know, when we formed the RESJ, one of the things that was discussed was having joint meetings occasionally with the council to get an update and kind of hear where things are. And I know things are a bit in flux because a number of people have stepped off RESJ. But I think one of the things that would be helpful for, at least me, would be to hear what the RESJ has been working on and if there are some things that have come out of, I believe it's six months, that are, maybe they're not there yet, but maybe they're close to being formed. And to me, that would be sort of helpful because I think that's one of the things we envisioned when we started this. And not necessarily a discussion of specifics of the budget or other things, but this is an opportunity for that. So I'm hoping we can hear a little bit more of an overview of where we've been, you know, where we are now as far as what you guys have come up with, and then maybe where you want to go. Thank you. So I'm hoping that Renee is talking to Liesel right now. She's getting on. Did she forget?
She's getting on. She thought it was 5:30.
There she is.
There she is. Hi, Liesel.
Hello, Liesel.
Hi, Liesel.
So Liesel, there were two things. One was Chance elaborated that maybe we want to have a broader discussion of the budget other than what we allocated in the budget workshop. And I talked about that we probably, my thoughts were that we wanted to hear kind of an overview of where the RESJ has started, where you've come to, if there's specific things that have come to fruition or will come to fruition soon, where you want to go. And so I guess that's thumbnail sketch of where we are, and Chance has his hand raised.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, Councilmember Kohler. And perhaps if it pleases the mayor and the RESJ members that are here and the chair of RESJ, perhaps we take that one first and then the budget stuff later, once we have a sense of that roadmap.
And I just wanted to add, I want to make sure that we get that discussion about the Brown Act in there as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. That would, that would sound good to me if you would like, either of you, and in particular Alexandra as the chair, to just give a fairly brief report, and we could come back to it if we have time later. But that sounds like a great idea. And I totally agree with the idea that we, that these joint meetings are something that would be good to have every once in a while. So, yep. Alexandra, would you, would you want to, sorry, I know you're put on the spot, but just a general overview of where you see things going with the RESJ?
No, yeah, I think that's great. I also, though, would like to propose speaking about the budget and the Brown Act first, because I think those are two very important things to the committee that allow us to move forward and allow us to continue to do the work. And if we do run out of time, all of our meetings are posted online. So that information is out there, but definitely totally down to talk about what we've been working on. I think we have a good representation here based on our subcommittees. I can definitely talk about the community engagement subcommittee and the PIPSA. So can Bruce and Veronica, and then Liesel and Veronica also represent the policy subcommittee. So I think we are definitely in a place where we can do that. And I'd love to do that, but I really want to uplift what the committee was really looking for.
Okay. All right, well, that sounds fine with me, too. Let's talk about budget first and possibly talk about facilitation, and then talk about some of the thoughts that the RESJ has brought forth about Brown Act modifications and some of the Brown Act requirements. Would that be an okay order with you, Alexandra? Okay.
Yeah, if that's okay with everyone else.
Okay. All right, so on the budget, we've started to talk about it. Alexandra or Veronica or Liesel, would you like to put forth any thoughts about the, what the RESJ has? I mean, we all know, we brought to the council, to the budget discussion, what the list was and the priorities that the RESJ talked about. So the council has seen them. Veronica.
Thanks, Bruce. Yeah, I feel it was very helpful to have the more explanation provided in the last RESJ meeting from both you and Chance in terms of the thought process that allocating RESJ an additional $15,000 on top of what we had in our reserves, which was, is $34,000 if I'm correct, around there? So that that allows us to have $50,000 if everything's approved tonight and that to be working with as we move into this next year. And we had initially come forth as RESJ with a request of around $77,000. And I know at first, when I heard that the allocation was only $15,000, I was a little confused. But once that was explained, the tacking on of what, I didn't, we don't have a treasurer yet or something, a way of allowing us to really understand what our budget is, which is what we're going to be doing in our next meeting, hopefully talking about the opportunity to really understand fundraising and our budget in a more transparent way within the committee rather than just getting reports from council, though we're really grateful for the reports we've gotten, just to be more on top of it and proactive. But I think that, I was under the impression that there was a realization that the racial covenant work that we were proposing on the policy committee, hoping to orient toward, that that was, we allocated $20,000 for that. And with further research and communication with the county, thanks Liesel, there's an understanding that maybe we won't have to incur as much of a cost as a town around addressing the racial covenants. And so taking off that $20,000 allows there to be essentially only $7,000 that wasn't allocated from which we requested as a committee. And my brain appreciates having all of it articulated like that so that I can get a sense of, there's $7,000 that we've hoped for as a budget that isn't coming through. And I feel like that's reasonable, and I'm feeling very grateful for the budget that we have moving into the year. And lastly, it was my understanding in our meeting, Chance and Bruce, that this isn't a zipped, if there's something that arises, particularly with the racial covenant, let's say as an example, as a cost, we can come as RESJ to town council and say, would you be willing to allocate town funds toward this specific activity or this particular initiative? And that that might be something that would, could be on the table. And I'd love to just hear clarification around that or confirmation. So those are my long-winded thoughts around the budget at this point.
Renee?
Um, yeah. Chance, sorry, I'm jumping in. I saw your hand go up. But I'm just wondering if we could rewind a tiny bit? Because I know we have a large number of members of the public here, and they may not have seen what came to us at the budget workshop. In fact, I'm pretty sure they didn't. So it would be good, and it would be interesting to frame this whole conversation if someone, I don't know if you guys have that in front of you, or Bruce or Chance you have, just to let people know, because it does give us a really good idea of what you're working on, what you care about, and, you know, in what direction we're moving. So could somebody do that?
I can.
Yeah, I would defer to Bruce on, because I could generally speak on the different items that were brought, because I do recall those items, but I don't have the dollar figures that were recommended. I just wanted to also, I raised my hand to clarify, I think, one thing, which was, of the money that was not approved, I think the bulk of it was actually not moving forward with a $65,000 recommendation for an additional year of facilitation, was the biggest amount that the council did not move into our budget. And the other items that were considered were the community survey and potential incubator program that's being developed by the policy subcommittee of RESJ, and additionally monies for materials and outreach for the community engagement subcommittee as well. I think those things moved forward, waiting to see what the racial covenant stuff at the county level is going to look like to determine what costs the town might incur. And then we put a pause on the facilitation and said, the current monies that exist in that kitty would not be used for facilitation either, which means that the majority of the work that RESJ wants to do would be able to be accomplished with the monies in there, is my recollection.
Yeah, that's mine as well, and I have that document up if anybody wants to, wants me to share it. Or I could read the numbers from it. And I think what Veronica stated was accurate with the amendment of what Chance stated, which is that there was also a request for $65,000 for facilitation for another year. And that was not something that council felt should continue at this point. We should, we, the council felt that RESJ was, would be able to continue without facilitation. So that's, that's the primary difference, really. And I think if, I think Veronica asked a question of the council, and my answer to that question, which is, which is what I had said to RESJ, was that, yes, this is, this annual budget process that we go through is not the only opportunity for the town to decide to do projects and incur expenditures. That happens through the year. But we try to put as much thinking as we can into the annual budget because that's how we keep the town fiscally solvent to do our budget and really try to think it through. But there could be opportunities for something as they came up, if everybody concurs that that's a possibility.
So Bruce, maybe just for people that are on the line who don't have the benefit, I have the document in front of me. I'll just read it off. It was $65,000 for facilitation. And as we've already discussed, that's off the table at this point. Survey of residents by the Police Practices Committee on policing with $5,000 estimated. The town policy committee, I mean, this group's policy subcommittee was looking for a grant to help, I think, a black home business get started, $22,500. Community education and outreach subcommittee was estimated at, that's a lot of work, so just posters, some other kinds of materials to public-sized events. And that was $4,320. And the last piece that Veronica spoke on was a $20,000 on the property owners to search deeds to see if they have some of those illegal covenants restricting who can live there. And just one quick thing, so I've been working with Liz Darby for a long time on this project, even before it was announced. And I really do think the county's going to take that on for all of the county. And I believe they will, so far, they haven't agreed to fund searching through deeds, but I think they will go back with that. But you already discussed that quite eloquently, Veronica. I just wanted to just share that with people who don't know what was on the list.
And I'm not sure, maybe I missed it, Barbara, but there was also a request for funding for a survey of the, of a wider survey of the town, possibly working with a, some group that was professionally able to do a good, accurate survey, and that was the PPPSA.
I just, well, there was only one survey, at least a list that I'm looking at that was handed to us, a survey of residents by PIPSA on policing, which was $5,000 estimated. And so that's what's on the list, but there may have been something that wasn't included.
That's what I meant. I just didn't hear you say it. Sorry.
Bruce, do you want to clarify for the public how we bumped up some of those numbers? Because $5,000 wasn't enough for the survey. And I think, I personally think for, I don't know how many events the engagement committee is going to be working on, but I think you need to pay people of color to share their perspectives. So I don't know if that 4K is going to go very far. So, and then the incubator is a small business owner of color and entrepreneur of color grant program. And it encompasses or includes pop-ups. I think that's what Chance was referring to.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the PPPSA would concur, Veronica and Alexandra, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, that probably the $5,000 is a pretty low estimate for what it would take to do a really good survey. And the sense of the PPPSA, I believe, is to really try to do a good, accurate survey and collect some meaningful information.
Mayor, I think Liesel's had her hand up for quite some time.
Sorry.
So, yeah, thanks for sort of recapping this. And yes, I talked to Liz Darby recently, too, and it does seem like, you know, that there is going to be a county effort that will engage local people and probably partner with local communities. So we're waiting to see how that rolls out. I did want to say that, you know, I'm wondering about the flexibility of the budget because I would say, like, having been a survey researcher for local agencies, $5,000 wouldn't have gotten anybody very far. The other thing is the, I know we did discuss the engagement group's budget, feeling a little concerned that it might be a little low. I've recently been working with SURGE, and they're putting on a series through the Fairfax Library of Speakers, and they firmly believe that they should pay, I think it's at least $150 per speaker for an engagement because they have a strong feeling that if we're going to ask people of color to speak about their experiences and their expertise, that we should, you know, give them a decent wage. So I think that it would be useful to have some flexibility around that because that seems like a very promising area. And then I just wanted to say that, you know, it'd be really useful sometimes to actually see the numbers on the screen just for us and for the public, because, you know, we kind of list them off and then we write stuff down. But it's easier for people to understand what we're talking about when they actually have a visual. So if you could do that more, that would be great.
So would you like me to share the written summary of those figures? That we've already talked about how those figures may need to be a little different, but yes, it looks like I can do that. No, I can't. Michelle, could you?
Yes, you'd like me to share the recommend, the request that was sent to us?
Oh, you've got it? Okay.
I believe I do. Just quickly.
I can email it to you if you need it.
And then I'll share that as soon as I can get it.
Okay.
Here.
All right, so it sounds like kind of in summary, setting aside facilitation, that the budget, the $50,000 might not really be enough for those projects if we really think about what they might actually take, but there's support for the projects. Alexandra?
Yeah, so I also want to mention that the, at least for the community engagement subcommittee, we talked about fundraising and how we can get the money back. So like for the poster campaign, there would be like a sliding scale from zero to like $15. So there, we've put in a lot of thought and effort into fundraising and replenishing our budget. So quite honestly, you know, I'm very, pretty happy with the budget and aside from facilitation, which is something I'd like to talk about. But yeah, I just wanted to put out there that we have definitely put in thought and are continuing to put in thought about fundraising for RESJ on our own.
So it sounds like there are two things that there's a desire to discuss further. One is facilitation, and the other might be just thoughts about how fundraising might go. Besides the town budget, how the RESJ might do fundraising. But we may not need to talk about that now. We can talk about that at another joint meeting or just on RESJ. So, yeah, Barbara?
I just want to say, I was just reading off the list. I'm not saying that I'm supportive of all these items. And I think a couple of them are things that, just like you talked about, possibly needing to come back to the committee or to the council on something. For example, the grant to help a black-owned business. I think that needs to be really worked out before we would do things like that. So I just want to say, I was reading the list, and I think we need to hear from the public on some of these things as, at some point. But, so I, I'm not, I mean, I'm not totally supportive of everything on there.
Yeah. Stephanie?
Well, I just thought it would be important for the public to know that there's other work being done that does not have a cost associated, like developing a diver supplier policy so that when we have expenditures of X amount or more, we will have a requirement to include in our RFP responses, business owners of color, you know, minority women owned, et cetera. It don't, to my knowledge, that doesn't exist today. And that, there's a lot of off-the-shelf, you know, the organization GAR and other tools available to us. So that's just one example of a lot of meaningful, impactful work that doesn't have a cost associated with it. So obviously, this is a budget discussion, but I think since we're having this session, the public should know that not everything has a dollar not associated with it. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And I've pointed out in the RESJ meetings, and I should say this before my fellow council members so that I can also, Garrett might want to weigh in on this, that my understanding is that some of the things, there's sort of a range of things here, some of which are requests from RESJ for RESJ operations, but some things are, like the survey of residents is probably in that category. The PPPSA would put together that survey and try to administer that with help. But other things like the grant, the item three there on the screen, the grant for, to help black-owned businesses get started, that might be thought of more as a recommendation of RESJ to the council. If that's what, if I'm understanding what Barbara said, that she would like council to be able to think about this further and staff to think about this further as it was developed, that might be thought of as a recommendation to council and not necessarily as a budget request for RESJ because RESJ wouldn't actually administer the grant, presumably. I don't know, because I'm not on that committee, and I don't know that detail. Anybody wanted to speak to that thought from either group here? Veronica?
Yeah, quickly to that, sorry, Bruce, to that point. I think that we're still developing and investigating. Stephanie's doing a lot of work, thankfully, on this with us and understanding models of these. of these types of grants that have happened in other communities. But that, at this point, I don't have a full, clear answer, but I believe that it ultimately, it would be something we'd invite the town to issue as a grant, but through, through RESJ in a way. So I don't think we've worked that through, but I don't know that we have it decided that we'd ask town council to administer the, the town separate of us, that we would develop it and still hold it and take in applications ourselves, would be my understanding at this point, and that's not speaking for everybody.
Yeah, so the process, if, if a grant process like that were to be developed, the process could include RESJ, but it would also include the town in other ways, administering the funds, yeah.
So can I just chime in that the Marin Small Business Development Center, in our very preliminary discussions, has offered to partner with us on this. So it's not, it's not an accurate assumption that it's going to place a burden on staff to manage applications and so forth.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to point out, we actually have a hard stop on this meeting at basically 6:20, because we on the council are going to roll right into a 6:30 council meeting. So just be mindful of, of time.
Mayor, could you, could you possibly stop sharing the screen so we can see each other?
Yes. Oh, that's Michelle. Okay.
Thanks, Michelle.
Chance, did you have your?
Yeah, I just, before we move on to further discussion, it sounds like Alexandra had some, some other discussion items, maybe about the facilitation bit, which I think we should get to, given the time. But I just wanted to add for the public and to piggyback off of what Alexandra had mentioned regarding programs being sort of self-funding. At the last RESJ meeting, there was a discussion about actually the establishment of a sort of fundraising subcommittee that would work in partnership with other, you know, nonprofits or agencies or things, you know, trying to workshop and figure out how to get things funded outside of the budget, which I think was something that the RESJ members had heard from members of the public as well. So just wanted to let members of the public know that they are being heard in that regard, and that there's, there's, there are more creative solutions to the funding issues and the projects that the RESJ wants to realize. So just wanted to make sure that was clear for the public as well.
Thank you. Alexandra, would you like to, to bring, bring us into the next topic of, which I think maybe you were saying you wanted to talk about facilitation next? Either facilitation or the, or the Brown Act, but I think we need to cover both of them.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to get public comment, I believe, on this, in this meeting as well, so they'll be.
Okay. There is one thing that came up for me through this discussion that I just wanted to briefly point out, doesn't have to be a whole discussion, but I noticed that there was mentioned twice about paying people of color for their perspectives and experiences. I just wanted to put it out there again, that we're asking RESJ members to give their time for free, share their experiences and their perspectives. And that continues to be a heated discussion, but I just want to put that out there again, that it sounds like council members understand that you should pay people of color for their time, for their experiences and their perspectives. But moving on to the facilitation, I have to say, I was really disappointed to see our facilitation removed in the way that it was. I just think that there was a lack of respect for our facilitator and our committee. I think I just feel really disappointed that our committee really didn't have an opportunity to express our gratitude towards Lisa and kind of allow for that transition to happen. It felt really abrupt and cut off. So I'd love to kind of understand how, where that conversation went and, and the thought process behind it. But I will say that I was very, very happy with the way our June meeting went. I thought it was smooth. I thought it was productive. I thought it was a safe space for all of our members. So, so I am optimistic about RESJ moving forward and having the ability to conduct these difficult conversations. However, I still, I do see the importance of a facilitator in the sense that this person is removed from the committee, from the conversations, from the, they don't vote, like, they're not an actual committee member. And so when you have heated conversations or little microaggressions that happen with the facilitator, it doesn't, it allows for the responsibility to not fall on the people of color to speak to a microaggression or a racist comment that was made. And it allows for that person who's a little bit removed from the conversation to take that on. And it relieves a huge burden from folks of color on the committee to, to have to continue to call those things, I don't want to say call them out, but, but, but to raise awareness to those moments. So that's where I see the facilitation to be really, really important. But like I said, I thought June went really well, and there's totally room for us to grow. So I see Veronica has her hand up, so I'll stop.
Thanks, Alexandra. I certainly didn't want you to stop sooner than you were planning. I was appreciating hearing your perspective on all of that, because it's so important now that you're in a role of meeting. And I know that this June meeting, the RESJ meeting, went so smoothly, partly because of the way that everybody picked up leads as we could, so that it wasn't just shoulder, you weren't shouldering at all. And I hope that we continue to do that, so that you don't have that, that pressure. And I just want to highlight what you said, and I know it's something that other folks of color on the committee have identified as a reason why the facilitation was so important for them. And I've, I know that it was a little, it took me a second in my whiteness to acknowledge how important this was, but that Lisa was doing an incredible job of making folks of color on the committee feel seen when there were microaggressions that were occurring, to get their back, as Alexandra was articulating, in meetings when there are moments where there are statements that are harmful being made, and that she really held that with such consistency and care in the meetings, and then would follow up to make sure that more harm wasn't being done to the folks of color on our committee who are trying to stand up for racial equity in our community. And so I just want to invite us, well, yeah, to ask you if you have recommendations around how we can make sure that that gap is not just left, and that then the folks of color on the committee are left to, to have to hold that after the meeting, or I, I just know that you deserve that care. And lastly, feel a call, as you're sharing that, Alexandra, to recognize the ways in which I, as a white woman, can step into that role more fully, so that you're not shoulder, other folks of color on the committee aren't shouldering, standing up in those moments. So I hear that call, and I hope that I step, step toward it.
Thank you, both. Would any council members like to respond to any of that? Renee? Yes.
Yeah. I, you know, I want to, I want to speak because I want to, I want to own, I want to own as one of the five decision makers that sorted through and thought deeply about all of the requests. And, and I have to say that personally, where I came from is that you guys had someone who held that space for you and built something out of absolutely nothing, out of a million unknowns, in a very, very, you know, sensitive, vulnerable place that I can't even really begin to understand. I feel nervous right now, actually speaking, having not been part of these meetings, and also really honoring your bravery in taking, in being the first. But my feeling was that when we look at a chunk of money, and we look at the six months and what it is that Lisa was able to help you guys and facilitate you guys to create, that just hearing you on this meeting, and I've listened in to some of your meetings, really appreciate being allowed to be a voyeur on those meetings, I'll be honest, is just hearing Veronica and hearing Alexandra and the council members who are members, I, I feel like you're in excellent, capable hands together. And this isn't me making an excuse, this is me saying you're, you're off and running with your subcommittees, with ideas, with support, and growing support from the community. And, and not everyone, and a lot of questions in the community, which we, we do owe the community to answer or to share. But I just feel as though that money and the things you asked for could be spent in those ways, and, 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 and I hope that you don't feel like we just dropped it, which is what I'm hearing. I, I do apologize for that abrupt cut, because that, that's not cool. It's not cool for Lisa, it's certainly not cool for you all. We did run into a pretty extreme challenge in that. But at this point, I'm confident that you guys will be able to, to thrive in this. And so, yeah, I'm going on and on, but I, I do feel that gut confidence. And, and also, you know, we're here and we're creating something, so we'll revisit. Anytime that this needs to come to council, I hope we'll have more of these opportunities to interface together. So yeah, sorry, I'll stop now.
Thank you. Barbara?
Yeah, I want to really just echo what Renee said so eloquently. What I'm seeing is initially, when we started with Lisa, it was, I forget what she calls her approach, which is sort of, you start out and then you work towards releasing. And I really think, apart from the abrupt stop, I think you guys are really stepping up. And I think being in a new group and a group of this type, which is different than other groups, but I will tell you, having sat in on a few other groups before I was on the council, it's always difficult with group dynamics, but I think you guys are there. And I also think with Ann Manus, you know, I think she can draft the agendas, most likely. I don't want to commit for town staff, but, you know, with people giving her input, she can probably put those agendas together. And I think also with having Councilmember Cutrano added to the group, I think folks can, where, like in any group, there's going to be things that come up that are uncomfortable. I think you guys can handle it, and I think from what you said, Alexandra, the June meeting went really well. And so I think also, you know, with some of our council members on that group, and particularly with Chance, who's young and has all kinds of new ideas, they can help get through those difficult moments. But I think you guys, having worked together for six and a half months, yes, we've had some folks drop out, but I think you're the core group. So I guess I do have confidence in you guys. And if there is, for example, a particular meeting with a very kind of complex sort of situation, it might be worthwhile to have a facilitator for an hour of that meeting. We've done such a thing with the council, just an hour, and a different facilitator potentially, somebody brand new. But I think those are the kinds of ideas, and I think I'd like to see you guys run with this, as you have been doing, and really just see where you can, you know, achieve. And I have confidence in you guys, so thank you.
Thank you. Chance?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, council members, Goddard and Kohler, for your words. And I, I just wanted to honor a couple things or hold a couple things. And it's, I mean, I might make mistakes in saying this too, right? But I think the, the first thing that I wanted to pull out is that we, we did just drop the facilitator, and I don't think that was, that was the intention. As we, as we were moving forward, I think there was, there was stumbling, especially once we went over, a little over budget, and then trying to, trying to get our footing again. And the, something that we should certainly do as a council is, is write a letter of appreciation, or, or, you know, give something to Lisa in appreciation to, to recognize what it was like to stand up this sort of committee, which is a first of its kind in Marin, and, and I don't know, you know, how, where else, but it's, it's pretty phenomenal. And I think there is a great structure, even attending my first RESJ meeting at the end, where we, where we have different people with different roles that are checking, you know, how much time are, are people taking up? And what are, you know, you know, how are people showing up in different ways? And, and all of these metrics for understanding the success of, of the meeting, it's, it's pretty incredible. And it's something, a model that would be great to carry on to other committees as well. So the, there's a lot of value in the creation of that, and I don't think that's, that just goes away. The other thing I want to honor and call out is what you had said, Veronica, which is that this, this meeting is, in, in June, it ran smoothly in part because different people at different times were, were shouldering different responsibilities and facilitating different portions of things based on their subcommittee roles or things like that. And I think that is how it's felt on other committees for me, whether it's Volunteer Board or, or Open Space. And I think there's a lot of value in sharing power and sharing leadership in that way and distributing that. So I, I hope that that's, that's a model that works for this committee moving forward. And, and then the final thing I wanted to say is to echo what Councilmember Kohler had mentioned, I was thinking that immediately, is I've been on boards where we've had to bring in mediators when we have seemingly intractable problems or conflicts that are, are too difficult for us to resolve in, immediately amongst ourselves. And I don't know, I don't want to wish that upon this group, but this is a, a more complex committee in terms of, like, you don't, you, you, you carry that committee with you everywhere you go, your lived experiences, our, our lived experiences. And so I, I, it'd be great to leave, leave that as an open wonder, whether or not a facilitator comes back in at some point, if there is something that is really challenging, and just seeing how we, how it rolls now, now that we have a process, and, and leaving that open to a future discussion, I think. So I just wanted to call out those things.
Thank you. Stephanie, did you, were you wanting to speak?
No, I don't, I don't want to.
Mayor, can I just add, it's, it's 5:51. I'm hoping that we can get to public comment. We have 16 attendees, and I, I don't want to short circuit this, but I think we, we definitely need to ask people for public comment, and I, I just hope we can start soon.
Yeah. I'll just say, I'll, I'll skip most of what I was going to say and just say one, one added thing, which is that I, well, I'll skip it. I'll just, I'll just move on to, so we've got public comment, and then I think we also need to talk a bit about the Brown Act.
I was going to ask, since we've, since we've covered two things, why don't we talk about the Brown Act and then go after public comment, so we're not back and forth? That's just my suggestion.
Uh huh, okay. All right. Yeah. Okay, and so, yeah, as far as the facilitation, I'll, I'll skip any further comments on it, but I certainly do want to express my appreciation for Lisa, and also for all the comments that were made here, but for the entire committee, and I just, I really do concur. I guess the, the thing that I most wanted to say, I'll say, which is that I feel that we, we've heard a lot from the public, and I think that the, we on RESJ, we really need to try to bring this to be a town discussion. That's one of the strongest things I think RESJ can do in the long term, is to, is to help facilitate within the town and with all, within all the households of the town, to actually be able to open up this topic of, of how, how things are for people of color, and how welcoming the town is or is not for people of color, and what we can do to improve that, either personally or on the policy level. So in order to open up that conversation, I, I, I'm sensitive to people feeling like RESJ is, is, is somehow not doing the work that the townspeople were hoping that, that it would. Is somehow not doing the work that the townspeople were hoping that, that it would do. And that's. Um. Partly linked with the facilitation, uh, just the amount of, the amount of money that was allocated. Toward facilitation of, seems to be an issue for some people in town and I can understand that. And that's, uh, I feel like if we can move on to focusing on projects and on facilitating a town discussion. In whatever ways we can, that's, um, that's the real work that we need to do. But I so much appreciate Lisa and I certainly would like to send some kind of an appreciation to her and it was very abrupt. And I know that was difficult for Lisa and frankly, difficult for all of us. Um. The, in the interest of time, can I just go on to, to uh, move the discussion to the, the Brown Act. Questions which have, which have come up from ResJ and uh, I think I'll just let. Uh, the members of ResJ other than ourselves, Chance and myself to, to talk about them, but I guess. Uh, Alexandra, Veronica, Lisa. I know there was one discussion, one question came specifically from PPPSA, so. I'm looking to Alexandra and Veronica there.
Yeah, so the PPPSA had put a request to town council to remove the subcommittee from the Brown Act. Uh, because of the harm that it is causing, because of the difficult nature and just the controversy with all of the. With the conversations that we're having. However, uh, we have made it clear that each member. Of the PIPSA committee is fully dedicated to maintaining transparency. And so at every ResJ meeting, which is still subject to the Brown Act, we report out. On what the PIPSA subcommittee is doing. I would be more than happy to make that even more detailed. Um, but I just think that it is more, it would be more productive and less significantly less harmful. To the members of the PIPSA subcommittee to remove it from the Brown Act. Um, because it is a subcommittee. So uh, there's really. Uh, my understanding is that there aren't any other subcommittees that are subject to the Brown Act. Um, so Veronica, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, thanks Alexandra. Um, I, when, as I'm looking at the resolution. Um, 20 dash 29, the resolution that the town council um, developed the ResJ for. Even in that, it doesn't articulate that the PIPSA subcommittee is subject to the Brown Act. So if I, in the very beginning, I was curious why exactly um, that subcommittee was. Uh, without really clear understanding on behalf of, of the members of ResJ, me being one of them. Why it was subject to the Brown Act to begin with, um, having not been stated in the resolution and it just kind of rolled into being. Um, ex, held to the same. Standards as the Brown Act would be for uh, the committee at large. And so two other things I just wanted to articulate that have felt. Have motivated my interest in raising that, that as a, as a potential option of removing the, the subcommittee from the Brown Act. One of which is the efficiency uh, of a sub, the purpose of subcommittees is to be able to get to work efficiently. Um, to put your nose to the ground, to be able to meet twice a week if there's two people who are able to meet from the. Organizations that might be um, offering suggestions to your subcommittee and not have to wait until the. Agenda is posted. Um, and feel fully aware that we, we have been majorly stifled in our capacity to move forward. Effectively and efficiently as a subcommittee with our task of reviewing police practices and public safety alternatives. Because of the fact that we can only meet uh, every two weeks for an hour and a half and have the, the restrictions that the Brown Act places. And then secondly, am aware because of the nature um, of how important we've acknowledged it is to build a relationship with the police department. And our subcommittee. There's been a lot of challenges with um, the meetings being recorded. Uh, and some of the ways in which we can just move into informal conversation with. Um, interim chief Tabaranza. And so it just feels like if we're actually. Trying to fulfill the mandate of what our subcommittee was tasked with when ResJ was formed, simply stated in the resolution that town council put out. The Brown Act is a hindrance for a number of reasons. And as Alexandra articulated, everything that we do. Is going to go through the reins of ResJ first, public meetings, and then to town council, again. Um, public meetings, public comments. So it's not as if PIPSA is going to do something. Uh, hidden and town, the town's not going to be aware of it. The public isn't going to be aware of it. Because we very much value having that feedback and oversight in a way uh, of the, of the town at the levels that it occurs.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Janet. Maybe I can um, add some, a little bit of clarity here. By just giving you some background about when you're saying what the Brown Act requires, the requirements of the Brown Act. Maybe I can explain a little bit about what the Brown Act actually says and what it requires. Um.
Yeah, I was gonna try to tease that out as well, so please do, yes.
Okay, so it's the government code, it's the California government code, 54952, this is section. And it's the definition of a legislative body. And the Brown Act says that all legislative bodies are subject to this act. And the requirements of the act. And a legislative body is defined as being the council. The town council is a legislative body and any commission, committee, board, or other body of a local agency. Whether permanent or temporary, decision-making or advisory, created in a number of ways, but. Uh, the one that we're focused on is created by formal action of a legislative body. So clearly ResJ is such a committee. ResJ is subject to the Brown Act, just like the council is. And then uh, there comes the sec, the next sentence, which is not all that clear. And it's, it's something that has given people a lot of pause and it's been the subject of a lot of interpretation and discussion amongst town attorneys, city attorneys. And it says, however, advisory committees composed solely of the members of a legislative body. That are less than a quorum of the legislative body are not legislative bodies. Except that standing committees are. So what this means is that you take the ResJ. And if you have less than a quorum of the ResJ and you form a subcommittee, the PPPSA, for example. That's not going to be subject to the Brown Act, not subject to having agendas and having them posted. 72 hours before a regular meeting, but actually there are, it's in a schedule of regular meetings, so it's 24 hours for a special meeting. So an agenda posted 24 hours in advance, open to the public, et cetera. The PIPSA is not subject to those unless the council wants it to be. And when the ResJ was formed and they were talking about it forming, ResJ forming a subcommittee. It may not be in the resolution, but it was part of the motion that was made that night. And I believe Renee was. The maker of the motion, because I remember very clearly that they wanted the PPPSA to be subject to the Brown Act. And to have meetings open to the public and to have a agenda requirement and a 24 hour special meeting notice, that sort of thing. Um, and the recording of the meetings was also discussed. And so. That's why, that's why we got to where we are. Um, at this point, I believe what we have said is that if you don't want the PPPSA to be subject to the Brown Act, to be. To have to have an agenda, to have it posted 24 hours in advance of the meeting, to have the meetings open to the public, et cetera. If you don't want that, that's fine. Uh, but you have to. Do, the council has to do that. Staff can't do that. The ResJ can't do that. Council needs to do it because council is the one that placed the requirement on. The PPPSA. Now, this is all assuming that the PPPSA is a subcommittee. That's not a standing subcommittee, that it's not going to go on forever, that it has a limited subject matter jurisdiction. They have a task to do. Once they do it, it sunsets, it's finished. And it's not a standing subcommittee, because standing subcommittees are in fact subject to the Brown Act. The only subcommittees that are not subject to the Brown Act are ones that are not standing subcommittees. Limited jurisdiction, relatively short time period. When their task is completed, they're done, they're finished, they're over, they sunset. So that's what I'm assuming the PPPSA is. It has been given a task. To look at police practices and policies, et cetera. And that at some point in time, they will complete that task. And once that task is completed, it will sunset and it will end. It's not a standing, ongoing, forever subcommittee. So at this point in time, what we're talking about is whether or not the council wants to have the PPPSA have open meetings. Noticed agendas, 24 hour notice, et cetera. The recording thing is separate. That's not part of the Brown Act. Recording is completely up to you. You don't have to record any meetings.
Uh, clarification, Janet?
Yes.
Extremely helpful. Thank you. As far as the PPPSA classifying that as standing or not standing. Is there any specificity around um, you know. Timing, like as a year or two or, you know, like how, how long?
No, there is, yeah, there isn't any specific set time. Um, and this has been also the subject of much discussion.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's thought that, you know, much past about a year. You're pushing the outer limits of a non-standing committee. Um, but there have been some non-standing committees that have gone on for longer than a year. So there isn't a set hard and fast rule about time. It's just that you have a limited sort of task. You're given this task to do. And you need to go and complete that task. And once that task is completed and you're done, you've given your report, it sunsets, it ends, it's finished. And so most people think, well, you know, about a year, but it could go on longer than a year.
And in your mind or in your opinion, is there a task defined um. Per the uh, resolution?
Well, I think that the charge is, is, was general and was to um, review and look at police practices and policies, et cetera. For the town uh. For the town of Fairfax. Yes, Renee.
Thank you.
I wondered if such a committee can be reconvened. So if there was, if, if it, if the task at hand. Was completed, if you will, and then there were new things to explore such as the public safety. And alternative public safety practices, could it be reconvened for that purpose?
I think you would form a new one. You know, you would have something with a new name, you'd have a new subcommittee.
Yeah, it's just, you know, an example is the Climate Action Committee where the Climate Action Plan was, was uh. You know, was really worked on and completed by the, by the subcommittee that worked on that of the Climate Action Committee. So, and that took quite some time.
Sure.
Um, I very much in support of this uh, becoming a true subcommittee. Um, and holding the consistency by which we hold other committees, which has been asked of us by the public. Um, that we, that we function and our ResJ functions like the other committees. There are some things that we're actually compromising in that. Meaning not paying people of color to be part of this at this point. And doesn't mean we're not, you know, up for future discussion about that. But because of that, I think that that consistency is really. Important. I think it's been a great hindrance to actually doing effective work.
I just have a few comments. I, I wasn't, I wasn't quite done, but so I, I just wanted to comment that um. I believe that this subcommittee is very committed to um, transparency and I appreciate. The works thus far and I'm really sorry to hear that there's, you know, harm occurring and. I fully recognize and appreciate how cumbersome being subject to the Brown Act is. Um, I guess I have a question and a comment. My comment will go first and I think it's in response to Alexandra. Um, the reporting, the report out as you, as you said on the ResJ is happening. And I might recommend that it is a little bit more formal. And that it is captured in minutes that are published. So all the other commissions in town actually have minutes and they're published. And um, while very few of them are being recorded and, you know, uploaded. Um, I don't know that people are, you know, um, taking the time to watch a two or three hour meeting, whereas they might, they might. Read the minutes. And so um, that might be something you consider and I know it would be more work, but. Um, if we're going to proceed with um. Considering, you know, the subcommittee not subject to the Brown Act. Um, I, you don't need me to tell you that there's a lot of interest in knowing what's going on with. The PPPSA in particular, and that's one of the main drivers of why it was stood up the way it was. And so. We wouldn't have rumor mill in the community. We wouldn't have false narratives. It was all out in the open, right? And so if minutes are captured and documented and I, I think that'll help that. Um, I, I think that's, that's it for me.
Okay, we need to move pretty quickly. Barbara?
Can we please go to public comment? I know there's a lot of folks wanting to speak and we've been speaking for an hour and 10 minutes.
Let's go to public comment, but then we'll reserve some time at the end to make a decision about this. Um, so if we can open public comment, Michelle, if you could do that and uh, let's try to keep it if we can to two minutes. Uh, because we, we real, I think we're having a valuable discussion here and I think that really is, is an important thing.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I see two hands raised right now, George Taylor and Patrice. So, Geo, you're unmuted. You might have to unmute yourself. Okay.
As I've said before to the ResJ, I think that having these conversations in public is so important and so transformational for our whole community. And I commend the town council for contributing sta- uh, funds, tax money to this event, the, the process. And I commend the ResJ for their courage. I did want to say, having sat in on many of the meetings with Lisa and Alexandra. I think that Alexandra just put out pretty strongly that, that I think she said she wants Lisa to continue. And because I was at the last ResJ meeting, in which not only the discussion of the Brown Act occurred, but also. The fear that would ripple through the BIPOC community, especially the ResJ members as a result of the San Anselmo mayor incident. I think that our committee is fragile. I think it's a fragile project and what I'm really interested in is making sure that it lasts for two or three years. I would like to make sure that we expend the money. All the projects that they've come up with are very creative. They're all going to take time. I think as, as Bruce said, I think, well, this needs to be a town discussion in every household. And the ResJ committee is forcing that conversation, is creating that conversation by public meetings, by public projects. And so I, I want to reiterate the importance of Lisa as a safety uh, valve. For the ResJ members whom I believe are under a tremendous amount of pressure. From uh, from townspeople, uh, from their own internal processes, uh, from outside uh, influences. And I think Lisa is core to the idea of safety and helping to create a space in which the ResJ can flourish. And um, so my concern is, um, I don't know how to allocate all the money. Um, I just feel it's really important that the ResJ lasts two or three more years and it becomes just another committee. That some of the hoopla and the antagonism drops out as we get some legs under it and some good projects. So I'm in favor of the facilitation, particularly because Alexandra said that she thought the committee needs it. Alexandra, I was listening.
Thank you, Jill.
The next speaker is Patrice, followed by Eva Crisant. Patrice?
Hi, council. Um, Patrice Bryan, Fairfax resident, African American. Along with probably every other ethnicity or sexual identity you could think of. And former member of the PIPSA and ResJ. First of all, I just have to say that um. I've spent 50 years with Caucasians trying to speak for me. I think that you guys are completely setting up Fairfax on the wrong foot. I think I've heard four people tonight say that people of color are. I think I've heard four people tonight say that people of color are afraid to speak. Well, then they don't need to be on this committee, and they don't need to be speaking to this committee. I was never afraid to speak while I was on it. The reason I left was because no one cared what I had to say. As the only African-American on the committee with two black parents, that's offensive. You don't care. It felt like everyone had an agenda. I would also say that, on the whole, the committee feels too inclusive. I was one of the people fortunate enough to interview interim chief Tabaranza. I never got the survey. I didn't know what I was walking into. That's really mismanaged. And uncomfortable spaces versus brave spaces, this is a brave space. If it's uncomfortable for anyone, it should have been uncomfortable for a person like me. I was fine. I was just angry. This incubator program for African-American businesses, what are the criteria? What are you trying to accomplish? What does the person have to do? I just feel like this committee is being paid with tax dollars, and they're not showing us anything. So Councilmember Kohler, thank you for how you tried to set up this meeting. I 100% agree with you. You do not talk about a new budget without justifying what you've done with the budget you've been given. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrice.
The next speaker is Mimi Newton. Nobody else has raised their hand, although I did hear from one member of the public who is trying to raise her hand. So press your hand button now. Okay. Mimi, you are unmuted now.
Okay, thank you, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to weigh in a little bit on the budget issues. I, I think Lisa was great in terms of helping RESJ and PPPSA, when she was there, to function. But I think that both committees need stronger direction from council as to what they're supposed to be accomplishing. Because I don't think even the most proficient facilitator is going to be able to guide you when, you know, it's unclear where council really wants you to go. And we have so much work in this town in terms of the nuts and bolts of dismantling systemic racism, making this more friendly in terms of welcoming people, and making housing affordable to different income levels. And I, I think that I, for one, really want to embrace everybody as part of this change. And I think separating out the members of the committee who are persons of color as, you know, somehow warranting reimbursement for their time is not something I'm necessarily able to wrap my head around. Because I think we need this systemic change at every single layer of our community. And we need people engaged and involved in this volunteer effort to help guide you as the town council. But again, I still think you guys need to give us some direction and give these committees and their subcommittees some direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Mimi.
Okay, the next speaker is Mark Bell, followed by Joe McGary. And, Mark, you're unmuted.
Okay, Ling Shen's going to speak. I also want to speak, but I can speak after Joe McGary. So here's Ling Shen. Do you want me to raise my hand again for that?
If you're going to speak right after Ling Shen, then you both can speak.
Okay. Can you restart the clock, please?
I don't, I, I, I'm going to be.
We're going to try to hurry, because we're really running low on time.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I, I'm going to be very brief. It's Ling Shen, and I just wanted to, to support what, what Patrice was saying. It seems to me that I'm not clear as to what the, the RESJ has accomplished so far. So that's why I'm questioning the, I think that also if you're applying for a new budget, you should show what you've accomplished with the budget that you've had. And I'm not seeing what, what it was. I'm not clear as to what they've accomplished so far. So that's my, what I wanted to say.
Okay, so I'll start, and you can start me at two minutes. Okay, Mark Bell in Fairfax. First off, I watched the last RESJ meeting, and basically you did everything you could to get rid of the Brown Act and public comment on everything. You set up the meeting so that it was one item with a bunch of subsections, so that when Deborah Benson tried to address the many points that were raised over the course of the meeting, she was told three, she had three minutes to comment on the entire hour and 45 minutes that went on ahead of her. This is, maybe it's legal, but to me, it's a, it's a violation of your moral obligation as a committee representing Fairfax. A total misrepresentation. And what I get from this committee is a bunch of separatism. I don't see inclusiveness. I see comments like, you know, 90% of the, of the people in Fairfax are white. Is that really the case? What are you basing that on? I just read somebody say that 80% of the people in Fairfax are white. Since this whole thing happened, I started looking at people as far as color, which I really never did before. And I see lots of people of color all the time, in the good earth, at lunch, high school kids, before school, after school, walking around. It's not like Fairfax is 90% white, and everyone's a racist, and everyone's wearing $200 sneakers. This is not the case. You spend $65,000, you could barely talk to each other. You haven't accomplished anything. When Patrice was on the committee, she said, "Name me five things that you've done", and no one could come up with even one. So what I would say is that, as far as the budget, and you guys seem to be pretty money hungry, as far as the budget, I think each program that you come up with should go before the town council for funding first. And as far as paying people on the committee, how about people who've been on the planning committee for planning commission for 10, 12 years? That's a lot of time. Okay, Bruce, I see that my time is up. Thank you for, like, running over and not giving people a speak, a chance to speak on each item.
The next speaker is Joe McGary, followed by Eva Chrysant, followed by Jane Richardson-Mack. And Joe, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, good to see everyone. And, yeah, great to see Alexandra and Veronica up on this panel as well, and Lisa as well. Yeah, just a few, you know, a few thoughts on the facilitator. And I really appreciate the, the sentiment of, of council and, and how they're, you know, trying to explain the reasoning for, for dropping of Lisa. But I just think that at some point, you need to, to center the voices of, of the group on, on the committee, and particularly the people of color, and, and hear what they're saying, and, and that they want the facilitator. And not try to explain to them why they don't need the facilitator, even when it's veiled in, like, compliments of the, the progress that they're, which I, I think too, I think the progress within that committee has been amazing. And, and it's, you know, the synergy and the cohesiveness. But it's still, like, kind of explaining to them why they don't need what they say they need. And that's, that's really problematic. And in terms of the money, you know, I can look at the police budget. Line 822's got, you know, an increase this year for firing range costs, and, you know, blood analysis and some other things of $30,000. Then there's a computer equipment maintenance increase. So I, I think that there's money, you know, around. And then in terms of the Brown Act, just to correct Janet, I went back and looked at the minutes, and the minutes are what counts. That's, the minutes for the, the motion to form the committee don't contain anything about the Brown Act. And that was July 17th, after the listening session. And it was Councilmember Kohler seconded by Councilmember Reed at the time. So I, I think the Brown Act should be lifted from this group. It's a, it's an expectation that no other subcommittee has. I don't really know how we got there, but it's not in the motion, it's not in the resolution. I'm sorry, I went over time. Take care.
Okay, the next speaker is Eva Chrysant, followed by Jane Richardson-Mack. And, whoops. Eva, you disappeared and you reappeared.
I'm muted. Thank you, I was, I was trying to unmute. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you can hear you.
Terrific, thanks, you guys. Um, I, I am interested in this topic, because I've been watching so much of a kind of parallel task force on Spool in Mill Valley. And, I mean, I think, you know, some of the pushback you're, you're getting is unfortunately a little disingenuous. You know, the whole question of what the demographics are in Fairfax, they're very easy to look up on Wikipedia. It's 88.9% white. That's not, you know, it's not, it's not a big question. You're a majority-white town. So, you know, that's, I'm sorry, that just is, is rather absurd. I do have to say, as someone who grew up biracial in Marin County, I, I do think that these, these commissions and task forces and committees can, can be fraught. And, and the pushback from the town is, is palpable. And you can hear the rage of someone who, you know, gets to only speak for three minutes. That's pretty standard in public meetings, two to three minutes. I've sat through, you know, years of such meetings. So it's, you know, if people want to be upset about that, that's, that's the way representative democracy works. I do want to point out that there, I think there is rationale for, for questioning the costs associated. And I take Joe McGary's point, I think it's valid, with the police budget being so high. I would prefer to see the police budget lowered rather than used as a justification for something that should be a volunteer effort. And I would caution that there was a stipend with the Mill Valley DEI task force, to my understanding, and that created a situation where people were unwilling to criticize either the, the city or its police force. And that was unfortunate. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Eva.
The next speaker is Jane Richardson-Mack. You're unmuted now. You might have to unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. I'm, I don't even know where to begin, except to say that I'm afraid the entire town council, except for one person, is all completely in favor of RESJ and pretty much whatever they want to do, except you didn't give them all the money they asked, but you made it perfectly clear, they can ask again later for more money. That's so weighted, and there doesn't seem to be any room for the public to really have any input. And if we do, we're called, I don't know, we're viewed as harmful, or, or racist, or antagonistic. We just are, we have opinions, we have brains, we have feelings, we have hearts, too. Just because we're white doesn't make us bad. I mean, I think this whole business of judging people on their color is such a dangerous, slippery slope. What constitutes a white person? Is it the color of our skin, our DNA, our heritage, our thoughts? I mean, please, we're, we're, this has been a very liberal town for a really long time, and you're painting us with a very broad brush that's, that's tainted from what's been going on nationally. I, I agree with Patrice. I, I thought she made some really good points. I actually agree with Mark Bell. I thought he made some really good points. But we, the public, when we makes, when we make a point, it just goes away. Nothing happens. You're not receptive. There is no diversity on the RESJ committee or the PPPSA committee. And I fully am in support of being, remaining under the Brown Act. It's the public's only, I am not. What about, I disagree with that book terribly. I tried to read it, and I think you have all drinking of the nectar and the Kool-Aid. And anybody who disagrees with you is a racist and a bad person. And I think you're wrong. You really need to listen to the other side for a change. Please. Bruce, thank you for saying, maybe the community, if you could please involve us, we would be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
The next speaker is Richard Applebaum. You're unmuted now.
Thank you. Sorry that there's so much acrimony and tension. And I know this is challenging and painful, and I thank everybody for, for hanging in there. I just want to reiterate that I really support the formation of RESJ, and I'm hopeful for it. And I just have one small comment or suggestion that maybe could help everyone a little bit, or the public, is if, I don't know whether you've all reached a point yet where you have kind of a mission statement, or a vision statement, or you're like top eight tenants, or something that you're, is your focus area in the near future, or mid-future, or long-term future, whatever. And so something that wasn't detailed, it's not minutes, it's not a whole analysis or a report, just a kind of high level. This is where we, this is where we're starting, this is what is most important to us, and these are sort of our goals for Fairfax and the work that, that we plan to do. And if, if that could just maybe go up somewhere, if you don't have it yet, maybe that could become a, a short-term priority, just because I think it will help. I think it'll help everyone just kind of understand where you all are as RESJ, and where you're trying to go, and some of the things that would come about. So that's just, just a small input from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
The next speaker is Frank Egger. You are unmuted now.
Thank you. Frank Egger, middle way. The Police Practices and Public Safety Alternative Subcommittee is a RESJ committee of the whole. You know, we've heard tonight about it's more efficient to remove a, a subcommittee from Brown Act. Fairfax has fought to keep its own independent police department for years. I mean, there's been huge battles in Fairfax. We've actually voted to tax ourselves to keep our own independent police department and not consolidate. It was clear the Public Practices and Public Safety Subcommittee wants to change the Fairfax Police Department as we know it. The comments like, "The Brown Act is a hindrance." So, speaking to the Brown Act, you know, Fairfax is a public agency, not a private business. There is a state interest in having public agencies and their committees public. Seems the Standing Committee is looking for a loophole to the Brown Act. They want to keep their meeting secret. I've sat on local, regional, state, and federal public agency boards, commissions, and councils for 54 years. We were always told by previous town lawyers, county lawyers, and lawyers from the California Attorney General's office that an ad hoc committee must dissolve itself after one year. I, I urge you to, to keep the Subcommittee a Brown Act committee. If, if you, if you think you're going to get support from the people of Fairfax to go underground with the committee, I, I think you're, you're, you're badly mistaken. You know, Fairfax folks want to know what's going on in our town. And we talk about transparency, and this is your test. But anyway, thank, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, so is that the, the last of the public comment?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close the comment. And I apologize for, in my attempt to chair this meeting, that we just, we have not had enough time. We're now over and into the time in which we should be having a council meeting. Fortunately, it's the same Zoom call, so there are probably people logging on and expecting us to start the council meeting. But I would propose that we maybe don't have time to really make decisions on these topics tonight, but we've heard a lot, and that possibly we try to schedule another of these joint meetings. Is that, what, what do people think about that going forward? Chance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't think we can make any decisions tonight. There's, this, this wasn't an action item. So I think this was just broaching the topic, and, and items might come back to council and might be deliberated at the RESJ in the future.
Correct, that's correct.
So I'm, I'm in agreement with Chance and I, and our attorney, who's just weighed in, that we can't make decisions tonight. I don't think it's time.
I don't think it's time to do another joint meeting. I think we could probably have some discussion. At the July meeting potentially on. Making decisions if needed, but I don't think it's. Necessary, not that I don't appreciate it, to do another joint meeting at this time.
Okay, though, Renee, go ahead, but I I would, I think we need to really move on with the action of adjourning this meeting soon, so.
I just wanted to point out, thank you to Richard Applebaum for the suggestion, but if you all go on the website and you look under the Racial Equity and Social Justice Board Commission. Section, you will see that their vision and mission statements are there, and they worked very hard to put them there. So that might help for the next time we enter this conversation. I agree with my colleagues, but I do think it would be important to meet again in joint session. Could be potentially August.
All right, so Veronica or Alexandra?
Um, yeah, so so I I may be wrong in this understanding, but my understanding of this. The intentions of this meeting was to create action to move for, allow ResJ to move forward. With deciding the Brown Act or the budget or whatever that may look like. Now, so I understand that that can't happen tonight, so I'm going to take this opportunity to formally resign from the PPP PSA. Because it's an unsafe environment. I cannot work like that. I will not volunteer my time. I work two jobs. I I don't have the time to to sit there and listen to harm racist comments. People are going to be mad that I called them racist comments, but they are racist comments, and I will not sit there any longer.
Appreciate your. Your strength. Okay, so I believe I need to just adjourn this meeting because we need to, we're late for the council meeting, and. It sounds like we should agendize a further discussion of this for the July 7th council meeting. So we'll, we'll look at that. Okay, thank you all. I'm sorry we ran out of time, and I'm sorry that it's a difficult topic. Veronica, I'll just hear what you have to say. Okay, all right. So we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, and we will be back together, I hope.